Good evening, everybody. This is a regular meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, February 14th, 2022 at 7:00 PM at the Downers Grove Village Hall. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on the Village of Downers Grove's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Ellis.
Here.
Member Hannah.
Here.
Member Harris.
Here.
Member Olchik.
Here.
Member Weiner.
Here.
And Member Hughes.
Here. Tonight, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide public comment to the board later on in the agenda. The board asks anyone wishing to comment to please fill out a card and indicate the topic to be addressed. These can be placed in the basket on that table over there to my right, and I have allotted 30 minutes tonight for public comment. We're going to start off today by welcoming the Student Council from Kingsley School. They'll lead us in the pledge.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Mel Hackett, Principal at Kingsley. So excited to be here tonight. I'm here and going to introduce Carly Boyle and Ashley Harold, who are our Student Council supervisors.
Good evening. I'm Carly Boyle, and I help run Student Council alongside with Ashley Harold. Our Student Council officers have worked really hard this year to ensure that we have that positive school community at Kingsley, and they are here to tell you more about some of that, so I will let them get to it.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mel Hackett, and I am Chief Supervisor at Kingsley School. Don't be kidding, you don't need a guide to quickly school behavior. You can follow Downers Grove every day. It contains the guidance you needed for paper calls, toilet paper, hands dirty, and other things. Because I was hired on the mission to tell about them, to tell them about the new drive and the learning. We had over 500 hours in this school. I will often talk to you about nature. We have trees and gardens. We get names for students at our schools and boards that are personally taught. And we give them each a form and that is not their first entry outside of the office. Your practice, family school, try something for making a deed, and your current and life are present and put it under two. And deliver the message to students outside.
You can use the microphone. You're welcome to use the microphone so that everybody can hear.
The fan makes it hard for us to hear, so if you guys...
You guys are doing great.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Claire Zimmerman, our Student Council Vice President. This past week, to celebrate Valentine's Day, our school donated to Habitat for Humanity. Students donated money, and when they donated, they would get a heart that they got to write their name on and decorate. Their heart was then hung up in the front entryway of our school. We are still part of all the donations that we were given. We received a total of $436.
My name is Grant Miller, and I am the Student Council Treasurer at Kingsley Elementary School. I am here to talk about the upcoming events at Kingsley. We were thinking about doing a fundraiser for the veterans. We're also planning on doing more Spirit Days. Like on Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022, we are going to do Tuesday and wear two T-shirts or two pairs of socks and everything that is related to Tues.
I'm Alenny Gajewski, the Assistant Principal over at Kingsley. Thank you to our Student Council. You guys have done some amazing work for our Kingsley community. We're excited to see what they have for the rest of the year. Right now, we're going to share a brief video that highlights some of the happenings that are happening over at Kingsley. It includes some of the highlights and the work that our students and staff are doing for our three school improvement plans.
Let it go. Let it roll right off your shoulder, don't you know? The hardest part is over. Let it in. Let your clarity define you. In the end, we will only just remember how it feels. Our lives are made in these small hours. These little wonders, these twists and turns of fate. Time falls away. But these small hours, these small hours still remain. Let it slide. Let your troubles fall behind you. Let it shine till you feel it all around you. And I don't mind if it's me you need to turn to. We'll get by. It's the heart that really matters. In the end, our lives are made in these small hours. These little wonders, these twists and turns of fate. Time falls away. But these small hours, these small hours still remain. All of my regrets will wash away somehow. But I cannot forget the way I feel right now. In these small hours, these little wonders, these twists and turns of fate. Time falls away. But these small hours, these small hours still remain. All of my regrets will wash away somehow. But I cannot forget the way I feel right now. In these small hours, these little wonders, these twists and turns of fate. Hell, these twists and turns of fate. Time falls away. Hell, but these small hours, these small hours still remain. Yeah. No, they still remain. These little wonders, all these twists and turns of fate. Time falls away. But these small hours, these little wonders still remain.
Obviously, that's a quick glimpse into our life at Kingsley, and as we were preparing this video, we were certainly very excited and a little tearful at times to think about all that we've accomplished this year. It goes by so quickly, and so there is no question that there are a lot of moving parts each and every day, but being the lucky principal of Kingsley School and being able to work with the staff, students, and families of our school is just such a great opportunity for myself and just so happy for our students to be able to have some of those experiences back like you saw there with fun lunch and our classroom parties. And all those things are a big thanks to our Kingsley PTA. So just want to say a quick shout-out here to some of our Executive Board members who are here in the audience tonight. So Sarah Havely is our Kingsley PTA President. Ryan Garrity is Vice President. Maggie Zimmerman is here tonight as well. And... Am I missing anybody else? That's our crew here tonight. So just, you know, big thanks to our entire community. Just couldn't be more honored to represent our school this evening. And so again, as you saw in that video, just couldn't be prouder of all the work that we've accomplished this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. For the Student Council members, we have a couple of gifts here for you. And for the PTA members that are here tonight, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. All right, listed on tonight's agenda are 106 communications received by the board. Are there any additional communications board members would like to share at this time? I will just let you know that most of these have been now responded to. Most of them happened on Friday evening or on Saturday morning, and they didn't make it. Not everybody has received a copy of those yet, but you will. All right, that brings us to the spotlight on our schools. If we have a winter snapshot, so welcome, Mr. Sussell.
Thanks very much. Good evening. As we've become accustomed to, we'll take a brief, high-level look at our winter benchmarking data and also another couple of data sets and really kind of just have some general first impressions with an opportunity for additional questions. The board will actually hear a lot from me in the coming weeks with the curriculum workshops coming up and a lot of detail, both around this work. As you know, we're involved in a process to develop key performance indicators and really think about the way we're looking at all of this data, so that all will be coming next. But again, tonight, we're going to look at our winter data, and we're also going to take a look at the preliminary Illinois Assessment of Writing Miss data that we have now just received from that fall assessment. Just as a reminder, as we approach winter data, this really is sort of that checkpoint. This allows us sort of a mid-year moment to see if we are headed in the right direction, if we are on track with both achievement and growth. This is data that building-level teams take a look at, the same kinds of data. They obviously are looking at building level and then down to classroom-level data, but the same metrics, the same pieces of information are being reviewed by buildings to take a look both at core instruction implications as well as individual student support possibilities. When we think specifically about this winter, obviously, we know we are still in the midst of the implementation of our new math curriculum. We know that there has been impact on learning because of the pandemic. We've talked a lot about that first two months of this school year and then what it meant for students to return to full-time in-person learning and relearn some of those routines and procedures, not, you know, not only academic content material. And the other piece that we just have to always keep in mind is that we don't have data on what a growth projection from a nationally normed study would look like in a pandemic learning year. So all of this is based on pre-pandemic data when we think about targets that are being set and growth metrics that are being used through NWEA, because again, that was all prior to the impact of the pandemic situation.
That first bullet point at the bottom, can you maybe just speak a little bit more? Would you expect it to be, scores would be higher as a result at this point? Or, because like the conversations I had with some teachers were like, we're already seeing some of the benefits of that, but I guess maybe you elaborate on the meaning behind that recognition of the implementation of a new curriculum?
Sure. I mean, I think that the reason we put that bullet onto a presentation at this point in time is simply to acknowledge this moment in time, you know? I mean, I don't, there are some instances where we may see more growth from an immediate post-pandemic baseline. There are other places where we just do kind of have to acknowledge the idea that there are, you know, there still are impacts that we'll kind of acknowledge in terms of what instructional decisions had to be made as students came back so that they could be prepared for that learning that's happening. So I wouldn't, you know, it's not my intention to predict that the scores would go in one direction or the other. I think you could actually make a case in a number of directions for what that impact could be. So it's just, it's just an awareness piece from my perspective as we think about how we're going to look at it.
Okay, so it's not an insight or conclusion, it's just a note?
It's a note that I think, you know, truly, I think all three of those bullets. The implementation of a new math curriculum could cause an implementation dip. It could cause a spike in scores from early implementation success. And so it's really just kind of acknowledging, here are some of the conditions around our district at this moment in time as we review the data.
Thank you.
Thanks. So again, tonight, we're going to take a look at the AIMS Web Plus data, really from a district level. We'll just look at that kindergarten, first grade that are administered to all students. We'll take a look at MAP data, K through 8. And then, as I mentioned, we will take a look at the IAR, which was the, it's really the spring assessment that we administered in the fall of this year. And so just as a reminder, that went to our current 4th through 9th graders. So when we get to that data set, obviously, 4th through 8th, we had full participation during, or mostly full participation during the school day. As it turned out, about 32% of our current freshmen who were District 58 students participated in that assessment. So that's just one more. That one is kind of an asterisk that we'll put. It's not really a full representation of that group. So let's jump into the AIMS Web. Again, we've kind of drawn our attention to that box on the bottom right with the corresponding color graph up at the front. That's an early literacy composite, in this case, for kindergarten. And so what we're seeing here is more than half of our students in the green at this point in the year and the remainder in that yellow and red area, which is not atypical for kindergarten at this time during the year. We're still working through the development of those skills. We're moving students from the red to the yellow and from the yellow to the green, and that really is the goal of all of that. As we look at the early numeracy scores for kindergarten, we see much higher percentages in the green at this point in time. And so again, is that attributable to different math? Maybe not yet in kindergarten, but it certainly just shows that at this moment on these assessments, we have almost what we would expect more toward the end of the year with, you know, in terms of tiers with around 10% of our students who will still need some support, around 14% who are at moderate need of support, but the vast majority at that place where they are expected to achieve at grade level for this year. This next slide is the one that we showed in the fall, and there was a lot of discussion around this early literacy slide for first grade in the fall. And then later on, at a subsequent meeting, we took a look at, you know, what had that looked like previously? How did it compare? So this was fall, and then if you look at that same early literacy composite on the right-hand side when we look at the winter data, you can see the movement that's already occurred. So if we're looking at winter as a checkpoint, to me, that says yes, we are headed in the right direction. We are moving students out of the red into the yellow, out of the yellow and into the green. We're seeing that green bar grow, and we want to see that continue to happen. Again, it's never going to be the case that it will be 100% green. That's just statistically never likely, but we want to see those numbers continue to come down as they have. Right now, we've moved, we've almost, you know, we've moved a good percentage of students into the green, and that's exciting to see already. And then just to finish out the AIMS Web, the early numeracy in grade one, looking very similar to kindergarten. We're seeing that students are projected to need, the vast majority of our students are projected not to need additional support or intervention in math at this moment based on this information. As we move into the MAP data, this is all of our reading data just sort of at this moment in time. And again, the blue-shaded boxes are all growth measures. The rest are all achievement measures. And so just taking an overview look at this, we continue to see our mean scores separated a little bit lower than our median scores. So that just reminds us that most likely there are some more outliers or some more clusters on the lower end than on the higher end necessarily. So that's just, that is one observation we can make. I would take a look at that middle, Winter '22 Achievement Percentile column. This, remember, the achievement percentile says compared to the other first-grade cohorts in MAPS norming study, where do we stack based on our RIT percentiles? And so as you look through that, we're beyond upper quartile. We're actually above the 80th percentile compared to all other schools, not to similar schools, but all other schools within NWE's norming study. So from an achievement perspective, that data is actually really exciting for us when we compare it in that way. When we look over to the growth section, we're still seeing more than 50% of our students, with the exception of 6th grade, meeting or exceeding their MAP projections in terms of growth for this point in the year. That's, that's a good thing. In the conditional growth percentile, again, this stacks our growth, just like that achievement percentile stacks our achievement against all of the other schools in the norming study. We do see some areas where we're seeing some lower growth percentiles. Again, I would take that in context with high achievement percentiles, but overall, that's an area that we want to continue to observe over time. It's not a dip that we've seen necessarily in those grades at all of those times. We're still seeing a good number of students meet their projection. It's just not necessarily that all of those numbers are where we would want them to be over time. So that then is an indication of while we've got some celebrations on one side, we want to make sure that we're taking a look at those, those growth numbers and what does that tell us about reading instruction and reading growth in those grade levels? Again, this is also all based on our own fall achievement. We'll tie that conversation together a little bit when we look at the IAR data as well, just in terms of some initial reflections on what some of our reading data may be telling us. And again, just to have one historical perspective, this is the median percentile really since we began giving the MAP assessments to all schools. And so you can see kind of tracking cohorts, and you can see what things have looked like in the past. And so, you know, we can acknowledge that from Winter '21 to Winter '22, there are some of those achievement percentile, median percentiles are within a range, but coming down just a little bit. And so again, this is one of those things that we'll continue to reflect on in terms of how does this look historically and what are the kinds of things we're seeing at the individual grade levels in terms of, you know, what other information do we have with that reading observation? Shifting our attention to math, again, we can take a look at those achievement percentiles and really say, okay, we're seeing some really exciting things in those areas. That kindergarten and first grade achievement percentile aligns nicely to what we saw on the AIMS Web slide in terms of the early numeracy skills, so there's some consistency in that case. You know, we're really excited to see some of those things. Again, here, every grade level, over 50% of students meeting and exceeding their MAP projections at this point, and the majority of the growth percentiles hovering above that 50th percentile as well with some definite outliers in both directions a little bit, a couple in the 40s, but then a couple, one in, you know, 3rd grade at 92, the 92nd percentile, and a couple others. So again, as a checkpoint right now, we're seeing that on the math side of things where it is, it is definitely encouraging to see those median percentiles, to see those achievement percentiles, and to see, you know, the growth headed in a good direction at the beginning of the year. Again, the historical math percentiles as well. As we look at the IAR data, again, I went through the fall assessment period and referencing the number of freshmen that actually completed the assessment. I also want to just acknowledge that this data is still technically preliminary while we have it through the assessment company, but we don't have yet is the finalized ISBE version that will publish into the school report cards that will be published. So that, that will happen in the next month or so. So there's a, like, we don't have the overall state averages yet, but we can take a look at some of the grade level bases. So while this data is complete in a sense, it is not final in the, in the ISBE reporting sense of the word. So when we look at our reading data, just from a district level, these are first the number of, or the percentage of students, excuse me, that met or exceeded on this assessment. So that's achieving a level four or five out of five possible levels on that assessment. And then the column to the far right shows the state average percentile, or the state percentile, excuse me, of students meeting and exceeding across that. So in blue, you can see we are, you know, we are going to be published probably at 44%. Really, if we were to exclude 8th grade, it would be 45% more likely. Our spring similar metric was the 49th, was 49%. So we're, we're going to realize about a 5% drop in those scores in the fall of 2021. If we look at where we were, if we look at, you know, the state differences, obviously, we don't have that final state number, but if the state average overall was 37, and you can look at, you know, some scores in the 28s, 29s, a quick analysis says that our decline is a little bit less actually than what was observed statewide. And so nothing to, you know, again, I think that one of the things we want to start having a conversation about is if we are at 40 or 50% of students meeting or exceeding these state assessments, how does that stack up against the rest of the state of Illinois? Obviously, you know, it feels like something we want to see increased in a couple of weeks. One of the metrics that we're going to be talking about as part of our forward-looking data conversation is exactly how do we analyze that and what is an appropriate target for District 58 to set for a percentage of students who are meeting, exceeding that R that's been set in Illinois? So again, while we had, we had seen some increases in reading over time, we are realizing a similar but not as strong difference to the state this year. We're, we've also never had fall data before, so it's one of those things that we are going to be able to take a look at some of the information. And this year, for the first time, we have IAR data in time to use it actively during the school year, which is new. That's, that's not a situation we've had before either. So we'll talk about that in a couple of slides as well. When we look at math, here, we're actually realizing a five-ish percentage increase in terms of the number of students who have met or exceeded the, the level four, level five in the state. You can see, you know, the state certainly saw a drop as well. So we went significantly the other direction in this particular case, and that's something to celebrate. You know, I think we certainly spent a lot of time amidst the pandemic focusing on continuing to implement a new math curriculum with fidelity. And, you know, is it, am I ready to say this is exactly correlated to that? You know, you can't make a single causal relationship, but I think that we have spent, you know, you've seen every school that's presented with Kingsley tonight included, one of our goals has been continuing to implement this curriculum with fidelity. And so our early returns on math are exciting. I think that's, you know, that's something to really watch for, particularly as you look at some of those younger grades, our 3rd grade and 4th grade scores who had less exposure to prior curricular components and more exposure to our newer curriculum. So that's something that we are looking forward to hopefully seeing continue to go in the upward direction. So again, when I, when we look at that, you know, acknowledging amidst everything else that's happened over the past year and a half, realizing an increase and kind of going, you know, 10 percentage points away from the direction the state, the state went overall, that, to me, is something I would want to celebrate. Just as one measure by comparison, when we look at all of the schools that send students to District 99, this just places District 58 against all of those other things. And I did put District 99's assessment on there. It's not an apples-to-oranges comparison because it's obviously the SAT assessment, which is very different, but it is their state-required assessment. So just to take a look at, at that data point, where are we in relation to what's available on the current school report cards?
In those school report cards, that's only district level. They don't break it down to 3rd grade versus 6th grade, right?
The school report cards will break down by grade level at the district level. So you can't necessarily see any of that at the building level on the school report cards, but certainly by, by grade. So one of the things then, okay, so let's look at our reading scores and say, yes, we'd like to say, think about why, why are those numbers not going in the direction of our MAP scores and what isn't? So this is two different grade levels, and this is one of the pieces of information we do get from IAR at the, at the grade level across the district. And so as you look at this across the top, on the left-hand side, it shows what's the performance distribution for the state and then for the district. And the key to that is the bottom left. So you can see as the blue gets darker, the scoring range gets higher, and the darkest two shades on the far right are how many students, how much percentage of students fell into that category four or five. Then, as you move over to the right, you can start to see where are areas of relative strength within the state and the district in this case. And so if you look sort of middle-right where it says reading, literary information vocabulary are three sort of sub-areas for the reading assessment that are broken down. And so if you look, you know, the state, you can see, well, if we just look under literary, for example, in 3rd grade up at the top, 45% of students are in that red for the state, but in District 58, only 23% are there. And you can see how our greens, as we move across, are actually pretty significant compared to the state. They almost offset the reds in some cases. Then when you move further to the right, where we're looking at written expression and writing conventions, which are the scores that are derived from the students' extended responses that are actually written, you can see our red percentages there are actually much closer to the state averages or, and certainly much greater than the other areas. And so really, as we take a look at that, we have, we are in the 4th or 5th year, 5th year of a fully revised reading curriculum. We are in year one of focusing district-wide on professional learning and pedagogical support for writing specifically as it relates to that. So it's work we are already doing, but it's encouraging to say, this confirms that we acknowledge, we've already acknowledged writing is an area of focus for us and will continue to be for the remainder of this year and into the next year. So just another example of taking a look at this at a very high level and saying, well, that, you know, if I was going to focus on an area to improve not only these scores, but our students' performance overall, writing certainly would be a next area of focus for our district. And so some initial takeaways, again, I think there is a lot to celebrate from both a growth and achievement perspective. We're, we're in the second but first true full year of math, and we're seeing some good early returns. We have some places we want to take a look at in our reading scores. I mentioned writing certainly, and believe it or not, next school year, by our long-term curriculum timeline, begins the review process to determine whether our current core curricular resources in reading language arts are continuing to meet our needs or whether we need to pursue new or different core curricular resources. Now, that's, that may be hard for some of us to believe because it seems like it just wasn't that long ago that we started with Benchmark Advance and the Study Sync. But in order to ensure that we are never, or hopefully never, in a position where we're adopting so many core resources in such a short amount of time, we do need to begin that systematic review process. And so all of this will go hand in hand as we start to say, okay, it's now been a number of years. In, in one of the meetings we had with an administrative group reviewing some of this, one of our administrators remarked that the grass grows where you water it. And so when we look at what's been happening with math and the amount of focus we've had on math over the past year and a half, it's not surprising that our math scores are growing, and we're excited to see that. We have certainly not stopped teaching, reading, and writing, but we haven't had that same level of initial focus as we may have had a few years ago when we first adopted a new curriculum. So it's just one of those cyclical things that we need to make sure we are maintaining and focusing on, and our processes are set up to do exactly that. The other thing, and Steve, this goes a little bit back to your point, is acknowledging that, you know, the first few months of this year did require some pedagogical and instructional choices in really all of our classrooms across preschool through 8th grade. As students returned to full onsite learning for the first time in a long time, there were, there were things that students were ready to do, and there were things that students weren't necessarily ready to do as a group. And a lot of conversation was had around helping students learn how to be students again, and teachers having to make some choices about what am I going to teach today so that I'm setting my students up for long-term success? And so did we get as far in the scope and sequence in the first trimester of the school year as we might have in previous years? I'm not necessarily sure that we did, but I think those were really sound choices. And so I asked some of our teachers to maybe share with us from that qualitative lens, how do we put growth on the quantitative side that we can observe with numbers along with... how do we put growth on the quantitative side that we can observe with numbers alongside the growth that maybe isn't as observable quantitatively? And so James, if you can flip to the video, this is just a short video that was a compilation of some things teachers shared in response to that question.
As kindergarten teachers, each year, we have students join our classroom families with various levels of school experiences. But this year was unique in that the overwhelming majority of our kinders now fell into this category due to COVID. While we always give direct instruction on things like social emotional skills, executive functioning, rules and routines, even how to be a friend, this year, that became even more important. We have spent a lot of time modeling, teaching, and practicing these skills this year, and I am so proud of our kinders and how far they have come. They've learned to be listeners and speakers when interacting with peers and teachers, which some have never done. They're learning to be independent with routines and self-help skills when, in most cases, someone has been there to do everything for them during the last two years. And maybe most importantly, they have learned how to be a friend. They're using kind words, they're problem-solving and helping each other, even sharing and taking turns with materials and toys, which makes my heart so happy as last year, we weren't even allowed to touch the same objects. And while we are not totally back to what a traditional classroom looks like, we are on our way, and I know our kinders are going to be ready when we get there.
An example of growth I've seen this school year that may not show up on map reports is students' ability to find the joy and the love in learning again. I think at the beginning of the school year, so many of my students would look at a list of tasks or things we had to complete throughout the day and immediately be sent into a panic. Seeing these students get back into a routine, trust their abilities, trust their classmates and their teacher, and be excited to learn new things again, has made my classroom grow in ways I couldn't have imagined. One student wrote, "I feel like I have grown a lot since I started this program. I am much more confident, and I have made so many more friends. I also feel like I can be myself and don't have to be embarrassed in front of anyone." Another student wrote, "Ever since I can remember, I've struggled with self-confidence and my image of myself. Now that I've enjoyed, enjoyed the Gifted program, I'm not as stressed, and I love myself again." A third student wrote, "In Gifted this year, I have met so many people like me. I have learned to use a growth mindset and use mistakes to learn. This experience has changed how I think and has raised my self-esteem." So just some examples of the way the Gifted program in this district is really helping this unique population push themselves, think outside of the box, feel more confident, and be comfortable in their own skin.
On Saturday, February 5th, many of our band and orchestra students participated in our annual district solo festival. After a virtual festival last year via Zoom, this year's festival represented a return to in-person solo performances by our students. As teachers, we have always valued the solo festival experience for the opportunity it provides each of our students to further their individual skills on their instruments, work diligently toward a long-term goal, and grow musically. But this year was particularly special as we returned to having students perform live in front of an adjudicator. We are extremely proud of the way our District 58 musicians rose to this challenge with
We had a new student start in second grade, not even knowing the letters in his name, let alone the vowel sounds in order to read. And he was very honest that he did not know how to read. Today, he's able to read sentences, write sentences, read short passages. Are we at grade level? No, we are not, yet. But we will get there. He's making progress. He's feeling successful, and he's able to read.
That's one of those videos that could be an hour and a half, but in the interest of time, we, you know, just a few examples. But I think, you know, this year, perhaps more than ever, it's important to keep all of those perspectives alongside each other. Obviously, this conversation will be ongoing. In a couple of weeks, we're going to have a presentation from ECR, which you remember is the consulting group that is working with us on our key performance indicators, of course, for graduate, and how we want to move forward with that. So we're excited to have that extended conversation in a couple of weeks. We then are looking at another opportunity for, if there are questions tonight or questions out of the 28th, for some additional data analysis, particularly around the winter data that we've shared. We'll continue then talking about the key performance indicators, and we'll continue with the process of bringing a snapshot of the data we have in June after our spring benchmarking period. This may be the last time we present data in exactly this manner. I think the conversations with ECR and along the ways we're going to be looking at that data may start to inform the way we want to look at and display and talk through the information as at the board level for sure. But again, that's part of the ongoing conversations as we go forward. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, can you just maybe go back to the previous slide? I don't think it was in the version when I looked at the...
No, this was, correct. This slide was...
All right, just wanted to take some time to digest this.
I'll ask a question while you're digesting it.
Please.
So I had, just thinking about our, our fall IAR data, because it's, it's always going to be treated with a footnote, right? I mean, this is IAR data, the most recent data before that we're comparing it to is to spring of 2019. We've never had a fall administration of IAR before. So I guess I have some, I like what you said about how we've never had IAR data at the beginning of school year, at least at this point in school year, in order to make, you know, instructional decisions for our kids this year. Do you have any big picture, like, for, I guess, thoughts about in your position as the board or how we're supposed to take that asterisk? Because I mean, are we still able to draw good conclusions from this data even though it's not really within the, it wasn't administered during the proper time of the year? And like, my fifth grade daughter this year was taking a test in the fall that she should have taken as a fourth grader in April of last year. What are your overall thoughts on that?
I mean, I think, so generally speaking, it's at that moment in time, aligned to all of the Illinois learning standards, this is how our kids did. I think that moment in time question is going to have, you know, we've talked about the, the fall of 2020 map assessment data that we have that was taken mostly remotely, and then the winter set that was taken kind of half and half. And so I think at some level, all of this will, the asterisk will remain, and there will probably be six or seven versions of symbols at some point in history, where we can look back and say, here are all of the different things. And that's kind of why I always want to contextualize any of this with, here's what was happening in the world within our district at this time. Am I, am I ready to, you know, I think you've known me long enough that I'm not going to over-celebrate anything. Was I excited when I saw 53% in math? I was. That's a number we haven't seen in a while, so that, that is exciting to me. Is that because it was fall, or is that because of what we've been doing, or is that, or is it a combination of things? That will be hard to know. We are not the only district that's taken the assessment in the fall. Certainly, the majority of the state did take the assessment in the spring. So is it, is it exactly a fair comparison? You can make a number of cases, right? In the spring, you're closer to instruction, and in the fall, you're further from some of that instruction toward the end of the previous grade level. So, you know, what, what is the impact there? You know, we were four months into the school year, or excuse me, four weeks into the school year when this assessment was given. So we had begun, you know, the first little bit of any curriculum is going to be the review of last year's concepts. Did that help or hurt on top of all the things we just talked about in terms of establishing routines and the length and intensity of these assessments? I mean, these are, you know, there's a lot to these, and the extended, there's a lot to the extended responses too. So could you say that we hadn't built up our writing stamina yet, and that could have something to do with what? You could. I think a lot of that is, is unfortunately going to be conjecture at this point because it's really difficult. We don't have any other comparison to say, this is what it looked like. You know, some of the work we can do and some of the work that ECR will talk about is drawing some comparisons to, okay, if our scores are here in IAR and they're here in MAP, do the, is that, you know, is that predictability there? And we looked at that, those of you that were on the board four or five years ago, and we were talking about IAR in general. We start, we spent some time with some of those comparisons. So that's one thing we might be able to do is to say, well, we have had fall map data in the past. But again, the last time we've had fall map data in any kind of a typical environment would actually be fall of 18, because if you remember, we didn't take map in the fall of 19, and then fall of 20 was fully remote. And so it's, our, it's just one of those things where I, my perspective is, we have to take each piece of data with a little bit of a grain of salt, but also recognizing that it can be instructive as well. We're not going to throw anything out because of timing, but we're going to keep it all in context and not overemphasize any one piece.
And so that's a good segue into my next question, which is, you talked about, you talked about just now about IAR, how we had almost two and a half years between administrations of IAR. And then when you look at fall of 2020 MAP to fall of 2021 MAP, one was done virtually, virtual, and the other one was, was mostly in person. Do you, do you think we have, for lack of a better term, for the lack of a better term, a type one assessment that is giving us good data on, that shows us our gaps that were created because of the pandemic?
So that's, that's an interesting question. So a type one assessment you're referring to is going to have, is a nationally normed score outside of the district, you know, how are we getting information that is coming to us externally? And so to that question, you know, is there going to be one piece of information to look at right now and say, I would pick this or I would pick that? That will be challenged. To preview a little bit of the conversation in a couple of weeks, as we've talked with ECR, who does this, you know, this is their gig. They're really looking at our 18, 19 data as the best comparable set that we have to set benchmarks for our district, because it really is, and now we know in 58, in 18, 19, we were, we were in a different place curriculally and all of those things, but it really is the last time we have, what they're looking at as a pure dataset to make some predictions in terms of where should we be based on where we've been. I would say by the end of this year, once we have our spring map data, we'll, you know, again, that is a, it's a pure set. It's not a, we're still in a different year, but at least we have a clean fall, winter, spring administered onsite in the typical windows of time type of assessment. I mean, you know, our fall map data in 2020 was actually administered six weeks later in the year than we typically would, as well as being 100% remote. So, you know, so that's really, you know, what are, what are we going to look at to set those benchmarks? We're going to look a little further back when we had some, some pure data, and then we're going to start to incorporate what we have this year as we look going forward.
Great. To jump in though, you know, from a superintendent's perspective, in terms of, is this data valid? Is it not? One of the things that I want to commend all of our staff for doing is regardless of if it's the best type one or, you know, a type two assessment, it is still informing instruction. And that's what I actually like, that we did take it in the fall, because now we can sit down with staff and say, okay, what did we learn, and how can we inform our instruction midway through the year? And I want to go back to that data slide that we saw, the Ames one reading for first grade in the fall. And people were very, very concerned, and rightfully so. But I think that's a really great example of when we see data in the school year, how we can look at it, how we can reflect on it, and how we can put additional supports in place to really, you know, inform that instruction. And now here we are midway through the year, and I want to commend our primary staff and Justin, your leadership there, because I think our principals really sat down and said, okay, this is something that we really have to address, and we're honored to be doing that. And so all this, I think you are going to see asterisks for a long time on some of these summative assessments, especially map and the IAR, but it's still helping us inform that instruction every step of the way, which I think is really important.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you for including the fall and the winter of that, because I remember at the last curriculum, that, that there was a significant amount of time focused on those two, that slide. So it was very encouraging to see the growth and the change.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll echo that. We should celebrate when we can celebrate, and you cautioned us on not getting too high in our highs and too low in our lows. Some of us, you know, were very concerned about the fact that we have first graders that had a really rough kindergarten year. And if you can have consistency in the classroom, in-person instruction, there's a lot of fruits of that labor, and so kudos to you and your team across the district for, for making that happen. I had a question about, I know we've talked about this in the past around similar school studies. The data that you shared around peer schools that feed 99 is just really helpful for us to get into context, the reality that the majority of students across the state do not meet or exceed state standards according to the state assessment. That is a reality that we deal with, whichever board of education you're on across the state. And so the similar school studies is a helpful reminder for us on peer schools that have similar demographics to ours, how do they perform? Do you mind giving us an update around what NWA is willing to do there?
So NWA's similar school study is an opportunity to look at a narrower group from within the norming study essentially. So it's not going to get down to that granular, you know, demographic of neighborhood and all of that. They'll use some of that information that's available. It's a, it's a study that you have to commission, so we would have to pay for it. We did it once in, in fall of 19, actually, with, you know, with that last set of 18, 19 data, and then obviously, a lot of that stuff got put on the shelf as, as the pandemic hit. So, you know, we can go back to that. I think that when we look at, you know, comparisons to, to similar districts and things like that, which is really, I think, what is, is helpful to us, both from a geographic perspective as well as a demographic perspective, you know, that's another, that's another benefit to working with ECR. They have a number of clients in Illinois and then beyond Illinois certainly, but they also have the ability to sort of look at some of those similar comparisons as well. So I think, you know, with everything, and I don't want to, I think I said ECR more than I intended to tonight, because we're going to talk about, a lot about that in two weeks. But, but the preview of that is with all the work that's going on in the background there, to really try to, to get us to think about how we want to look at data before we invest in another study through NWA and things like that, I'd like us first to kind of see what ECR can give us and see if it answers some of those same questions. If, you know, certainly, it's not, it's not a ridiculously high-dollar amount to pursue a similar school study, but it is, it's worth, it's enough that I would want to pause and see if we don't already have some of that same information that'll help us with those comparisons.
I think one of the, to piggyback about Justin was saying too, for the individual schools, it doesn't work as well at the district level, but NWA has something called the School Conditional Growth Index, which we have on here. And so when we're looking at that, I think that's very powerful, school by school and grade level by grade level, because what that number is really showing you is, where did the same school that started with that exact same RIT by that grade level, how are we growing compared to them? So it's not comparing you to all the other District 58 schools, it's comparing you to that school that started off with that same average RIT score. And so you can get a sense of, how are you growing compared to everybody else? And 50% is what we would expect, the 50th percentile, so anything above that, we know that you're outperforming your peer group. If it's below the 50th percentile, we know that you're not performing, you know, where the study said you should have been. So anything around that 50th percentile is really good indicator for us, you know, above or below. So that's something that we can take a look at without going into that in-depth study, where we can kind of get a sense of how are we doing. Now, what that won't show you, that the similar school study will show you is, you know, how many students have IEPs, or how many students, you know, are low income, those types of things. And so it's not quite as in-depth of it as the school study, however, it can give you some good information school by school.
And again, the ECR dashboard that we're going to see a preview of in two weeks can also do that exact same thing and can separate by literally any of the categories we have fed it with. So if we want to know how the fourth grade students at an individual school with IEPs performed this year compared to last year, we can actually get to that level.
So if we have like a question, you know, higher enrollment always comes up if there's 29 students in this section, would you kind of drag down to class size?
To the, to the point where we would, I mean, so we wouldn't be feeding enrollment into their dashboard, but if we wanted, if we, if we knew that, and I'm just going to pull a pretend example, but if we knew that the, the fourth grade at Lester, the class sizes were particularly large that year compared to the fourth grade at El Cero, where they were particularly small, could we compare those two by that? Yeah, absolutely. And again, it's, we'd have to start to think about the why behind all of that, but the ability would be there for sure.
I really liked, Justin, too, how you had the qualitative piece to that. That was really neat to see, because I think sometimes, you know, in the overall percentages or percentiles of achievement, Lisa, the reading specialist at Lester, said something I think is so powerful, that that's why I'm really excited about where we're going with our key performance indicators. That student that she mentioned would just show up as not meeting the state standards. But where that student started and where that student is, they may not be on grade level, but oh my gosh, the growth that that student has had. And so that's what we're really excited about. I know, Darren, that's something you've talked a lot about here, the, and many of the board members as well, is how do we capture that growth to really see, okay, maybe they're on a grade level, but where did they start and where are they at? And so I really appreciated that piece of the presentation.
Agreed.
Well, I think as a, you know, one board member, I think whenever we talk about growth, we got to talk about achievement. When we talk about achievement, we got to talk about growth, right? It's as simple as that, right? I think we should celebrate drastic increases in both, but also be concerned where we're not seeing those increases, right? So that's why I really love this comparison to the surrounding districts. So I would actually love to see that we kind of get, you know, even take it a level deeper So I would actually love to see that we kind of get, you know, even take it a level deeper into the grade level. Because I, I think this is very powerful, but once we start getting to averages, I think we may be watering down some of the comparison.
So this, this slide, but to break the, to just break it out even for, into grades.
You know, I'm needy.
But Steve, I think, I think you're right. And I'll give you two examples of districts that I've worked in. So when I worked in Hinsdale 181, we always wanted to talk about achievement, because our achievement scores were through the roof. But people were very hesitant to talk about growth, because that really wasn't necessarily as high as the achievement. When I worked in Chicago Ridge, our achievement scores were, were, were lower, but the growth was through the roof. And so I do appreciate what you said. And I, I really think that should be a norm of any board moving forward, is you can't talk about one in isolation. You need to really look at both, because you want to be doing well in both areas. And so I really do appreciate that. What I like about this slide is it's no secret that District 58, you know, for a variety of community reasons, did not necessarily invest heavily into the IAR, you know, 2014, 15, 16, when it was still called Park, right? We had a lot of opt-outs and, and people really didn't put that much emphasis on that test. Obviously, that has changed significantly over the last four or five years. When you look at these numbers compared to historic numbers, how we compare to our peer districts that are feeding into 99, these numbers continue to improve year by year by year, which I think really credits our, our district for turning around and looking at this in a new way. And so I do anticipate that those numbers will continue to go up as we focus more and more on this assessment. Not teaching to the test, but really saying, look, if this assessment is measuring the state standards, that's something we ought to be focusing in on, and we ought to be focusing on it hard. And I think you're starting to see the improvement here.
Well, I think that also just speaks to our shift in curriculum over the past four or five years as well. That four or five years ago, our curriculum is extremely outdated. And now we've revamped and done every single subject area. And that is starting to show in our scores as well, that those, those curriculums are much more aligned with the standards and meeting the needs of the students, so.
Again, in that case, I, I would always kick the credit back to our teaching staff, who have, who have dug in and implemented all of those with fidelity. I mean, that's, it's not enough to have a, a book that has the stuff in it. It, it takes the, the time and dedication and to really dig in and, and be willing to rethink the way you're approaching concepts you've been teaching for decades. And it, it really is exciting to see all of that. It's also, you know, Kevin mentioned credit to the primary team on that first grade slide. That also circles into our cycles of inquiry and all of our day-to-day conversations. And those, that's work that's been being done to get to, you know, some more consistent questions and more consistent outcomes. And, you know, we've really seen a responsiveness to all of that information, both at the school improvement planning level, but also just at the individual and small groups of students level to, to ensure that we are, we are meeting those needs. And so, you know, none of this is possible without all of that extra effort by our teachers.
Yeah, I think over the last couple of years, the, the board did a lot of financial investment on curriculum. And it, and it's really nice to see that balanced on the opposite side of the time investment that's been done, both by our, our administrative staff and our teaching staff. We, we were talking right before the meeting about all the work that's been done of really creating a, I don't know what that is.
I'm going to get that buzzer for you.
Is that your three minutes?
I guess, yeah. That felt awfully brief.
Only kidding, only kidding.
James, what did you say that?
But ultimately, the, the core that we built around it to build a lot of uniformity in, in what we're teaching across the district, I think, is seeing a lot of balance in, in the scores and a lot of, a lot of improvement there. I think the only thing I'm disappointed about really is that we never got to see a full, real example of what that investment would have looked like had the rug not been yanked out from underneath us. We had just finished doing this major investment. I mean, we're still wrapping up social studies, but, but everything else is really on this trajectory. And we were so excited, we were, we were starting to, we were getting ready to start looking at, at what this investment was doing. And school got weird, you know, to say the least, right? You know, so I, I look forward to, as we return back to some levels of normalcy here, that, and, you know, we heard that in that video of just that process of even relearning how to learn in some of those environments and the anxiety of the wordless. We got to remember that even though we were in session all, in person last year, we still did have a portion of our kids that weren't, you know, that chose to be remote. We still had, we have a portion of kids that would have moved in here from another district and may have been remote for all or some of last year. So I, I think we can, we can appreciate that as well, that, that that's not all that, that that's impacting these numbers as well. But I, I am looking forward to seeing this, and I'm looking forward to the presentation, was that?
Two weeks from now?
As well, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the superintendent report, Dr. Russell.
So due to the number of meetings and the fact that we just had a meeting on Thursday, I'm going to really do a condensed report tonight. So hopefully the buzzer won't go off on me too soon here. But first off, I, I want to just thank the community. I want to thank the community for a very productive meeting on Thursday night, where when you turn on the news, you see not every Board of Education, not every community is able to have that kind of meeting like we had on Thursday, where several different viewpoints are expressed. And it was just a, a really nice meeting. I want to thank everyone, you know, for being so respectful and, and kind as we went through that. I also want to thank our staff. We had our first day of Mass Recommended today, went extraordinarily well. Principals reported that students were doing exactly what we knew they would. They respected everyone's choice and really had a, a successful day, so thank you. Want to thank the Kingsley team. I know that the kiddos have left, but I thought Mel Hackett and Aleni Kudjuski, the administration there, did a great job with the staff today, so thank you to, to them. I do want to go off script a little bit and, and thank Chief Shannon Gillette. Our police department, you know, has been fabulous here. Chief is stopping by for our meeting this evening. It's been an extraordinary year on so many different levels, and the community partnerships that we have are, are just second to none. And the Downers Grove Police Department supports the students here in District 58 like no other police department I've ever worked with. So Chief, on behalf of all of us in the district, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, next month, we're about a month behind on the school calendar adoption. The reason we're a month behind is really no fault of anyone. District 99 puts their calendars out a couple of years in advance. And there was a change in the law about elections in November, meaning that you have to take that as a, a day off. And so District 99 had to rework their calendar. They have gotten their draft to us, so we're now going through the finalization process. And we will get that to the board for full approval at the March meeting. Like always, we'll have a little bit of a different start and end time than District 99, but our breaks will be aligned for our families. We know that's something that is extremely important. Just as a heads up, one of the things you'll see in next year's calendar, two things. First, winter break is very far ahead of, you know, the pendulum has swung, so we'll almost be out a full week prior to the holidays. That's, District 99 has done that in conjunction with the ROE, that's the recommended calendar. The following year, we're working with the high school district and our feeder districts to put that closer to the holidays. So you have a little bit more time after the break than you do before the break. I think our families really appreciate that when, when we're able to do that. So next year though, we come back on January 2nd, so we're recommending that January 2nd becomes that day off to give people a buffer after the new year. And again, more to come on that, but we will present that at the March meeting and get that posted so our families can plan accordingly. And then it's hard to believe, but it is Valentine's Day. It's a great day in the elementary setting to have Valentines. And so it's another sense of returning to normal. Our staff and students had a wonderful day today in the district. And so we just want to thank everyone and all the parent volunteers that came in today. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. But you're not off duty yet. The monthly business and treasury report, Todd can't be with us today, so.
Yeah, so this is really going to be abbreviated. Unfortunately, Todd's not able to be or is not feeling well today. But I want to do some highlights on the business and treasures report. So year to date, at the end of January, overall revenue, or overall revenue, excuse me, exceeds expenditures by just under about $500,000. For the next couple of months, expenditures will exceed revenue as we wait for the spring taxes to come in. That's something we're very familiar with. On page five, where the revenue expenditures and fund balance are posted, you'll note the addition of the sale of Longfellow. Because the funds received from Longfellow is the result of an asset being sold, it's not considered revenue. The line's been added to show where the funds will be deposited. So you'll see $3 million in the capital fund with the remainder of the balance going into the education fund, as we discussed at previous meetings. In the list of items for approval this evening, the board will find a resolution that typically gets brought this time of year to transfer $9 million from the working cash fund to the education fund. Working cash fund is our internal bank. And due to the low fund balance in the education fund, because of the tax, you know, delay, we transfer funds until the early tax receipts are sufficient and the loan then gets paid back. So we're borrowing from ourselves and then paying that loan back. Additionally, each year at this time, we ask the board to approve fees for the, or, excuse me, for the upcoming school year. Fees increase mostly by inflation or the CPI. Transportation, though, increases by the amount of the increase of the contract. This year, that amount is 10%. We have adjusted some of the fees to make it easier for parents and staff. Some fees were collected separately and not included in the registration fees, such as the recorder fee and the binder fee. We've added those fees to the general, or general registration fees, so people only have to pay once. Additionally, the first set of work to be bid out for summer projects are on the agenda for approval. These projects are funded by the proceeds of the sale of Longfellow, as we discussed at previous meetings. That concludes Todd's business slash treasures report in one.
Just want to mention, that's a good reminder of why we actually have the fund balance policy, that, that, that transfer, that's, that's why we put it in place.
So when we get our audit in the fall of next year, we're going to, because we're spending all, we're spending the proceeds from the sale of Longfellow, and it's not becoming revenue, it's going to show that we have a very large deficit for fiscal year 22.
You know, I, I'm going to default to Todd on that one. I'll have him talk about how the accounting works for that. I just don't want to misspeak, but I will certainly have Todd get back in the weekly update. I just don't want to misspeak in terms of how that gets counted for the audit. But I will have Todd get back to you with that answer.
Sure. And the only reason I'm asking is not because I'm overly concerned about that, but that the AFR is, is sometimes the only document by which people get to know our district. And if it shows us that we have a $4 million deficit, it would just look a little strange, I guess.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we're going to move on to committees. First up is the Policy Committee of Vice President Harris.
Yep, thank you. We had, had two meetings since our last board meeting. One was on January 11th, the other was, was on February 1st. The reason why we had two is because there was just so much work to go over, that we split it into two meetings just to, you know, not overwhelm people. I will say this, and I don't mean this pejoratively, but that these were two boring meetings. And, and boring because there was nothing controversial. There was nothing that really changes the, the operations of the district. It was very much business as usual, nothing that got anybody excited, nothing that really required these, any, any large conversations. Much of the work that we did was just periodic review of our existing policies. And then there were some legal updates that were recommended by press. So it's a lot for the, for the board that's going to be put under for first reading tonight. But it has been reviewed by our administration, it's been reviewed by our policy committee. Tracy and I, as members of the committee, have given it a very good look. And I mentioned it's been reviewed by our attorneys as well. So we, we feel very confident that there is really, this is very, very, very much vanilla updates. And we feel very confident recommending them for, for first reading tonight.
Vanilla gets a bad rub.
I also want to thank Melissa for all of her work with this. The manual is about this thick to change, so thank you, Melissa, for saying that.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes, thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve for first reading the policies in Press Issue 108, as presented in the attachment drafts?
Don't move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Melissa, please call roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to approve for first reading the policies in Press Issue 108, as presented in the attached drafts. All right, next up, we have the Legislative Committee, Member Ellis.
So the Legislative Committee, I didn't realize I was presenting today. The Legislative Committee met in January and had the legislative forum. We've not reported on that yet, I don't believe, correct? It went very, very well. We discussed items around mental health in the panel. And then individual groups broke out and discussed a variety of topics with the legislators that were there. We had a full panel, which was really nice to see. It was an excellent meeting, I think, and it was productive. And I really liked that the jazz band played from O'Neil, that was really nice to have as a starter. Other than that, the meeting itself was focused around presenting for the legislative forum. So forum went very well.
It was a great meeting, and it was the best turnout we've had, at least since I've been coming to these. So really appreciate all of our legislators that came by. It was really great to hear people's, the first set of opinions from our reps, our senators, and our, even our constituents, it was awesome.
Agreed.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there this year, and I was so disappointed that it didn't work out. And I would love to hear just if anyone has any feedback on, in terms of the sort of shift in forum from previous in-person breakfast to this one, where we had kind of small groups, as opposed to the larger, I would love to hear if anyone has any, like, feedback on whether they liked that, didn't like that compared to old methods of in-person breakfasts.
I'd like to hear that too, because I didn't have anything to compare it against. I did like the way that this one ran, it seemed really nice, and I think the audience enjoyed it. But I'd like to hear comparative.
I will tell you that from my perspective, the, what was really nice about that is in years past, a question would be asked, and then it would sort of just work its way down the panel. And by the time you get to the end, it was like people were repeating, people were whatever. And so I, I think as a person that was attending, you were kind of like, I want to move on from this question. I feel like we've, we've said the things to be said, and, and we want to go on from it. And so the idea of a canned response didn't work as much in this meeting, because we were at the table, we had an opportunity to have a conversation. And even though we had kind of questions to choose from, it became a more of an organic conversation, specifically around whoever you were sitting with, what their role could be in that. And I, and I thought that was, that was really helpful and, and more interesting. I, I would say, if anything, expand the time on that, maybe find a way to have that opening part just be real brief, like, hey, this is an introductory thing, like each, each of you take a minute or so and just kind of talk about why this thing's important to you, and then let's break in, into groups. Because I think that part was, I, and honestly, I think the legislators that came enjoyed that part more, you know, as well.
The individual.
When they got to sit down, you know, with us, they seemed, you know, like, or at least the people that I sat down with seemed to be really engaged in our conversation. They didn't have to sort of wait, you know, wait their turn. So I don't, that was my, my personal take, I don't know what else felt.
Agreed.
Yeah, we tried that out the first time because of the pandemic. Were able to do it over Zoom last year, and so breakout rooms are a lot easier. I, I really liked how we translated it in person, it worked really well, it seemed.
Good, that's good here.
And the other thing too, Emily, just to piggyback off of that, I appreciate getting the board's feedback, because we'll take that back to the Legislative Committee. I know Megan did also send out a survey to anyone who was in attendance to gather that feedback as well. So what we typically do is the Legislative Committee with the board members that are representing us, will, will take that board feedback, we'll take the feedback from the attendees, and then we'll try and just continue to improve on the event moving forward. The last two years though, from my perspective, we've got a lot of positive feedback about those small groups. And, and, you know, we get really good feedback, direct feedback about what people liked and what they didn't. And so we look forward to seeing that.
Good.
Yeah, I liked the panel at the start, because it gave everybody an opportunity to hear from each of the legislators, whereas you only got a chance to meet with two individually on the.
I definitely agree.
Yeah, that was really nice.
I want to hear from everybody.
Yeah, I like that too. And we, I think we only did get through one question, so I think maybe next year it's just one question.
Yeah, agreed.
Anything else about legislators?
No, nothing else.
Okay. The Financial Advisory Committee did not meet, but the district leadership team did on February 7th. Member Weiner. Member Doshi.
Either one of us. We met on February 7th, and it was a quick one hour, it was a very succinct topic that we were looking to talk about. And we went over, Justin brought a packet for us to review. And we looked at a timeline for developing the new KPIs and talked about the draft of the, the, was it the Curriculum Council? Do you remember? It was the group that met with Justin beforehand, it was the Curriculum, wasn't it?
Curriculum Council.
That went through and sort of came up with the draft, along with APRA, the eight KPI areas that we went through and talked out, and how we would, the associated metrics with it, like how we would measure those KPIs. And kind of hash through that, and more of, more of that will be coming up at the Curriculum Workshop on the 28th, when APRA comes, and we get to meet then too. That's the next time the DLT, or the next time that we'll meet before the Curriculum Council. Right?
That's right.
Does that sum, sum it up basically?
Yeah, I think just to echo what a few board members said earlier from the Winter Snapshot, and the idea of like talking about achievement and talking about growth. snapshot, and the idea of like talking about achievement and talking about growth and not, not ignoring one when you're talking about the other. What I really like about these KPIs is it takes it a step further. Academic achievement and academic growth are really important indicators, but they don't capture some of the things that you hear about in the qualitative video that Justin put together. Things like communication skills and critical thinking and the ability to collaborate with peers are just not measured by a test that is administered by the state or by NWA. And so really excited about the direction we're going as a district and recognizing that it's a process. And so, you know, we said this a few meetings ago, where this is a time for us to be able to set the course for the district in terms of how we think about student key performance indicators. And so just excited about the work that Justin and his team are leading, because I think it's going to help, at least for this board, take in the direction that we were hoping we would be headed.
Well, you're really building it up, because that's what I'm most excited about over the last three years, is kind of seeing that, so.
Yeah.
Very excited.
He'll see it.
Anything else on District Leadership Team?
Nope.
Thank you. Health and Wellness Committee, Vice President Harris.
Yep, our meeting was on January 13th, which was so long ago that my, the information I have for this presentation is kind of out of date. And we were supposed to have a meeting on February 10th, which was on Thursday, but that got canceled, so we don't have any data, at least I don't have any, I don't have any data available to me that is more recent than November. But I can talk to you about November data, and hopefully by the March regular meeting of the board, I can have some data for December, January, and possibly February. But if you remember some of my, my updates from earlier board meetings, we did have a good run of, well, actually a bad run of months there, where we were running deficits for our plan. That starts, that's kind of typical with the start of a new fiscal year, because that's when our stop-loss insurance restarts. So we did have, for the first time in November, a modest surplus of about $100,000, and that is due in large, that is due to the fact that our stop-loss insurance starts kicking in, we're getting those reimbursements there. We have, that was, you know, that's the, the data piece was the first part of the meeting. It wasn't really that, we didn't really dig that deep in this, in this meeting. It sounded to me where we were looking at setting premium increase or anything like that, so we focused more on our wellness plan, which we've been talking about for a while now, and again, with the goal always being how can we promote it more to get more participation among our staff. And the other thing we talked about, which is a new focus, is our EAP, our Employee Assistance Program, and our, trying to think about, is our current provider meeting our needs, what more do we want out of a provider in case we ever want to make a shift going forward? Just kind of having those conversations with, with the committee and with possible recommendations coming to the board down the road. Jane, can you think of anything else to throw in there?
All right, great, thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, and that brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to share public comment with the board, but is not intended to be a time for members of the public to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to a future agenda or addressed by administrative staff as appropriate. The board has allotted 30 minutes for public comment this evening. We ask that you keep your comment to a three-minute limit to allow anyone, everyone an opportunity to speak. At this time, we have not received any cards. Is there anyone here wishing to make a comment? All right. And with that, we're going to go up and take our approval of minutes. Are there any suggested revisions to the minutes as presented in the packet of materials? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2022, regular meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2022, regular meeting as presented. Up next is our consent agenda. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel report and financial statements consisting of the list of bills and summary?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. First up, for action tonight, is the resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the working cash fund to the education fund. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the working cash fund to the education fund?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to adopt the resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the working cash fund to the education fund. Next up is a recommendation for an iPad purchase. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of 3760 ninth-generation iPads with cases in a three-year Apple Care Plus for schools for a purchase price of $1,561,492?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I just had a question, James, maybe you could help educate me. How did we arrive at that 1.4 grant number? Like, why not more, why not less?
So the grant is limited to $400 per device. And so it was based on that number, and there was, you know, you had to count the students that have an unmet need, and the only students that you can apply for a grant for. So I took, so I took the current enrollment, and I know in a previous memo, I kind of went through the rationale on which students I felt had an unmet need, unmet need, sorry. And so basically, that number times 400, there will be a, to get, without getting too far in the weeds, if we get that alternate case approved, it will drop down to 377 per device, so the, it'll be a little bit less than $400, but still a positive financial or change, financial change in the district. Does that answer your question?
All right, thanks for highlighting that, I missed that memo. Thanks. Sorry about that. No, no, it's okay, no, I appreciate it.
I'll ask a question on this, too, then. The, this grant is a one-time grant, I'm guessing, and so when we recycle our devices, this is the vast majority of our iPads in the district. Do we need to budget for, given that we're doing like five-year-out budgeting, do we need to budget for the next cycle being coming out of pocket as opposed to coming out of a grant potentially?
We already have been budgeting, it's in our.
So it's already in there, and so this is 1.4 net gain for us because we were not budgeting for this grant to come through?
Right, we've been, we've been budgeting based on the fact that it would be a lease, so we have like kind of an annual payment that we've been working with.
Got it, yeah.
And so that's one of those things that's been figured out in our, in the budget already.
Got it.
Did I speak correctly?
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to approve the purchase of 3760 ninth-generation iPads with cases in three-year Apple Care Plus for schools for a purchase price of $1,561,492. Next up is Inspec Engineering Services Proposal for Masonry Improvements. Is there a motion to enter into an agreement with Inspec Engineering to provide a building envelope consulting services for the masonry remediation projects at a total cost of 6.25% of the lowest responsible construction bid?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
We, maybe just a logistical question here. We have a masonry remediation bid award memo in the same docket here. Help me understand the Inspec versus the bid itself.
Sure. Kevin's coming up.
Oh, hey, Kevin.
Yeah, and as you're walking, maybe talk about how we look at long-term budgeting, you know, we're kind of starting to clock over if we execute this contract of tuck pointing and masonry adjustments.
Okay, thanks. So I'm hearing a couple of questions here, so I'll go with Member Doshi's first, so.
As you should.
So the question regards to two items on the packet, really, really came down to in January, the revisions didn't get to us right there. We were kind of at the deadline for the board agenda that week, the date that they were doing the revisions. So Todd and I were kind of going back with them to finalize a couple of numbers, and we didn't feel it was fair to hurry up and stick it in on Friday when we weren't 100% on it. So normally, yes, you would see that one month in advance, and then they could, or even more, and then the construction bid coming. In this case, because we were still kind of finalizing that number. What you'll see in that packet is, I believe it says 6.25% of lowest construction bid. Just as a reminder, our master agreement with Wyton Company is usually around 9%. So this is much more beneficial to the district, and this is what Inspec specializes in. It's a Member Olchik's question on the budgeting cycle in masonry.
Yeah, so like, we're doing remediation right now, right?
Sure.
And so it's, in essence, we kind of made a decision, probably due to lack of funds, that we wouldn't kind of keep up with preventative maintenance as much as we probably would have liked to, right? So I guess I'm saying, all right, we do this work, we kind of reset the clock, what's the thought process around kind of staying ahead of that, more of a preventative versus remediation?
Are you asking about how long until we do it again?
Right, or how do we prevent it so it's smaller chunks?
Yeah. So in this case, and it's more in the second item, you know, not, not this item particularly up for vote right now, but the next one. You know, you can pretty much go a 30, 40-year cycle on some of these major masonry projects as long as you're putting in that minor, I think somebody just mentioned, like, a minor 10-year cycle of touching up. So rather than, you know, targeting the whole building for repointing, you might have to go in 10 years and do just a few sections, a few elevations, but you wouldn't have to do the whole thing. So a nice thing about roofs and especially masonry is if you get in this 20, 30, 40-year cycle, once you do it, if you keep up with this general maintenance at these 10-year points, then, you know, you can kind of prolong that. And that's one thing we're looking at on the roofs, is, you know, what, what can we do so rather than we hitting that 20, 25-year warranty level, what can we possibly do to extend that to a further lifecycle span?
Thank you.
And then in terms of our overall budgeting for the, for the district, so we can start addressing these things, having that fund balance policy and then having dedicated money into capital each year, you know, and then hopefully passing a potential referendum should help with that as well. And so dedicating more money to capital so we can continue to stay up on this is something that we have to do and something that the FAC, you know, is really, I don't want to say requiring, but highly recommended that the board continues to do. And so in the future budgets for next school year and the, in the years beyond, you're going to see a greater amount devoted to capital in making sure that we stay ahead of these things. Again, I, of course, this board knows this, so I want to be clear, there's not enough money in the budget to dedicate to capital to pay for all the things that have to be fixed in our building. I do want to be clear on that.
I think one of the, just to highlight that while we're, I used to don't know, one of the things that's a challenge is, in the memo, there were a few buildings that we would like to be able to do this project for, and the needs for this one building in particular are just so high that we're about to approve a significant dollar amount if this passes, and we have significant needs in buildings that have very similar needs that we just can't get to because we don't have the funds in the budget.
And nobody's going to be taking photos of this and putting it on social media like the south renovation.
I'll do it.
The new windows will look good for Belmont Avenue, though, I'm going to tell you that.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to enter into agreement with Inspec Engineering to provide building envelope consulting services for the masonry remediation projects at a total cost of 6.25% of the lowest responsible construction bid. Next up is a bid for masonry improvements. Is there a motion to award the masonry remediation base bids number two and number three to